Huh? I don't know what's going on. I didn't even hear that. I think Paul did it first.
How's your harvest?
Good. You like what we did after I do it? And if that one, you're gonna help me out.
This is the special meeting of the county council. It's still at the PM approximately, June the 24th, 2024. And we will have a meeting for the quarter. The quarter, we will be here. That is your director. I speak as the head of the council.
Gabriel Walker.
All right, you have the point of the agenda. And with that, so if you'd like me to get the list of the candidates, I'm hoping to be in order to approve the agenda.
And acknowledge you should approve the agenda. Aye.
If that is approved, then the business can be had now. If people recall this special session, I personally put business discussed.
Well, so that the county, he's wanting to have a budget meeting on July 12th at noon in Kingdon County. And I don't think he's had to even talk to you at all.
No, I don't think he's talked to you.
He's not gonna help Brenda in the office.
In that contract, it says that people are going to train.
Oh. So I'm concerned about the budget meeting being completed at noon.
For what?
When you said 24 months, it was on July 12th at noon. I work.
Well, we've always set the budget meeting, the county never set the budget.
Yeah.
Please set the budget meeting. And it's always been open to the public.
Now, how many people are there on this 14 minute meeting?
Well, I'm not, I don't take pay for this job. I've always took my time, I don't.
I thought we always had it here. Didn't we always have it here?
Yes, it's always been a special meeting.
That's what I thought.
And open to the public.
Yeah.
And in his contract, it's safe, or reforms from points, is training various city officials in budget work. And here, municipal accounting. And it's already happened from Kent Island.
Next.
Say again about locations.
The meeting.
That location of the meeting.
It's gonna be at the Kingdon County Courthouse in the county.
That's a contract, that's a contract.
It doesn't say in the contract.
Meeting.
No, we decided, according to the contract. I heard the impression that he was gonna help. Because we asked, because he's only been in contract with Gail the other night. If that was one thing we asked, was is he gonna help Brenda and get caught up on like, on our part? And then I was like, what? Did he mention that same thing? Apparently all he does is budget, perhaps not.
Not on the contract.
Not on the contract.
We feel that he would require this one, yes. And we're not gonna nail it.
So that, that's his contract that I invited. Where he said he would help the city. Look. Because he's saying, we need to go, we need help with goodkeeping and deputy keeps, we need to hire somebody else. It probably don't matter, but if we're in the month, we're gonna end up paying the same price.
And getting help with training all on the way.
Okay, let me reach here.
Because he wants you to call a separate guy from deputy keeps. And then if you need help in the office, you gotta call another guy.
And Brenda, does she have something to say yet?
I really, um, I had a call here. I didn't get, because I originally talked to him in one of these contracts, he's in the back, so I did. I enjoyed it, so I called. And I was like, gee.
Isn't that the last question I heard from you? And I said, no, so I ended up calling.
Let's go through a couple times before the contract is signed. What's his?
When I heard some really good things, we put the contract aside. And now I've heard that he is not here to work with.
What do you wish to do?
So that, I can change and get somebody that will help them. Put yourself in a couple.
Thank you, I mean, I know, because I was under the impression that he's gonna do all that. And so, I'm surprised I voted that that he was gonna help with, help Brenda. Help. I want to hear about the deputy keeps, they're coming out. And maybe they'll make part of it, Brenda and Gail, they're all there. They can do all. He's gonna try and make it. He doesn't target them, or anything, or any people I'm calling, or anything.
So why is he talking to Gail, and not you? Gail didn't even have any information.
Because he's gonna do it just for fun and championship.
It don't matter.
But you ask why?
Right.
He's appointed with Gail.
She didn't even have any information. That he.
Well, he asked for certain things, so he didn't have a bad thought about it.
If I tell you this, the budget hearing happens at noon here. And that's not why people do.
So what, we have the, we wouldn't know. Probably the same house, but we need to get Gail there, they're having a budget. So I have a lot of.
Are you talking to the mayor? On, so you're talking to the mayor. You're seeing, or. You know.
Because every time I have a meeting, it's the president or president, so he knows exactly what's going on. If you're going to use our council, there is, and they were the great questions that I have. We needed some email, it said, whether it be the president, or the mayor, or the council, or the private requests. And this was sent on June 6th. To Gail. So. It's, oh, yes, I think we're in February 11th.
This was sent the 6th. Also. Oh, I'm sorry, 12th. Yeah. Budget meeting is due on July 12th. When, so if you only called him once. Or when you called him, was he, did he get in contact with her?
Yeah, I mean, the answer. When I called, I called twice, I think, because over time, it's all setting in the contract. So that I knew that, and I remember that, so. But he doesn't make them come to the first time. Because Brenda, because Brenda, she's still needs help, she doesn't. I mean, she's working for a gab, I mean, definitely, probably all kinds of things.
She's getting the month to month, but when I talked to her last, she said, I don't know how to go back and figure out what we carried over from last year to this year. And we need to know what we carried over from last year to this year. And she cannot figure, she didn't know how to do that.
There's no, I mean, that's something. Because yeah, she is.
But we're not getting anywhere on the year, we just need help on.
And I know where it is, but uh, she didn't have, sort of, a head. Does she have like sewer, category, special parts? I mean, she's been doing, you know, she's been doing, I don't know, yeah, it's time for something, I don't know, I don't know a lot of emails.
She did it, actually had also.
It's almost there.
What do you wish to do about the budget?
I don't know how to do it, but it's not just about the budget, it's about the machine. It's something to take in the past. Not worried about it, if for your contract conceits, not following what the contract says, it could just fail. If he wishes to go after that, that's fine, okay?
So he's in Kingdon County, so. And that's of course, standing right there, with strong, just training various city officials. And budget work, and use the local county. And I can ask anyone, or, so, I'm gonna be trying to help. And then it's out, you can see, it's an email to you, it said, I just made a request to be in this for $2,800. Because somebody has said, if they're, like, in fact, it's not possible. They're gonna be, like, after, they're gonna be left in the comments.
I guess you could call him every morning. Find out about when the budget meeting will be here, if he's not willing to do that. We gotta do something different, or find out if we're gonna get the help we need. If the budget meeting happens here, or if we did not say it happens somewhere else. And we said it did. Always happen here, always happen here. Hopefully, just publicly, with minimal question.
Another night, I believe.
Yeah, it's always been a 7, not like a meeting. Sometime, sometimes it's a different night.
I would like to have it here, but I'm like, uh, the town of Martin, he may look down.
We'll have to schedule, we'll have to work, we'll have to work someone. If it has to be a different night or something, that's fine.
If you're talking about a day of our choosing.
Well, he'll just have to tell us his schedule, so we're on schedule today. Because that budget hearing thing is something that the mayor, the council, we should print all the ads. He's got work for Brenda to be here, Brenda needs to be here for that.
Is that ocean water, or is it the color tomorrow?
It just needs to be a consensus.
Has that consensus? Next, don't be a danger. Hope we can't stop him, uh, I appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Put on your motion.
I tried to, I'm sorry. We wish to go to executive session, with the council mayor, for normal, without the 15 minutes.
Your second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know, I'm dead. I just have to. I'm never gonna do that. Okay.
I think Gail would be here.
I guess she's helping the harvest, they're petting the weed up by our.
Are they?
Yeah.
And I messaged Dana, Dana said she was busy, so she wasn't coming, but we got three. We were lucky, we were bad. But Christina brought up a good point, she can't just call off that day. We've always had meetings here. I think they should just say goodbye to him. He's not done nothing yet. He's got our laws. Well, you expect the whole year long. What, he makes a funny pages?
No, I had an article, uh, I was talking to Gail about, I saw a family.
Did your eye light it?
Well, if it's dollars, my eye would be.
So what time do you start your job tomorrow?
I root.
Yeah, the one that I'm just helping with.
Yeah, I'm thinking I might get there at least.
Well, let me know, so I can look pretty shy, tie it right down before the morning.
That's right, yeah. Sleep up on that, we'll be at Sadie's around five or six.
You gotta back off. I'm scared of heights.
Well, I go off.
Danny, I can't throw him off. How's your chickens doing?
Okay, we got some little chasers. This one, I've got that two by three mesh, it goes through all the time, all the time. It comes back.
It will not come back one day. That's all you're getting.
Yeah, I know, I've heard it chase a couple times in the alley.
Are you putting ice in your water?
Uh, we're just cooling it down. I'm thinking about taking, I've got some frozen water bottles and I'm just dropping them in there.
How many takes for the freezing water?
Well, we've got some water melt water that we can keep in the refrigerator.
It's hot weather, it's bad. So I'm gonna call Sierra, the lady who does, so you mean. And then I'm looking down here, I'm not hearing her little voice. She won't come. She thinks he bored from us.
What are you talking about, mother?
Oh, Sierra wants me to bring her stuff with me all the time.
What's she being a keyboard worrier about?
Oh, complaining about things she sees on the videos. You know, she's only looking three days a week now, there's no reason she can't come. She's got this.
We'll be back in session, session everything expired, no action was taken there. You have other items on the agenda per se? We're getting to business. Thank you much for doing today.
So, our old accountants, they even dropped Sylvia, so it's not just maybe because they've dropped all this mall. Yeah, they, they, they serve in Sylvia and I don't know. The old accountants, they, they dropped Sylvia too. The old accountants, they dropped Sylvia too, that's been done a lot. And they dumped Sylvia, yeah. They already dumped all this mall down. They're bigger fish than the pride.
Jeff. There's a security following the library.
And the library?
We can't talk about this. We'll talk about it, let you know the problem there.
I thought.
There must stand right.
We're not asking you to.
Well.
Why don't I just stop here, let's walk to the hallway and talk about it. Or outside.
They're not too bad out here, it's cool down.
Three people to call a personal meeting, so what do you have, we just call it, so it's.
I do.
Who has those records?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's on there.
Yeah.
Sunday reading program, the kids come in, put him in there and he comes in as well, which I guess he should not, if he's indeed a registered offender.
Yes, he is.
That's also why you're not allowed it.
Kids are all scared of him, cause they miss history, cause all the parents have been telling the kids they're scared of him.
And that's why Cheryl had to stop him from coming there a lot.
Oh, man.
But he comes in, he comes in the library, which is a public. Unless he's restraining order, unless he actually has a restraining order for, that keeps him away from the library.
Well, yes.
And I don't know that we can do anything about it.
Right there you go, sir.
We can get a no trespass, because he's got a sexual.
I showed him, so now he has seen it.
We can get a no trespass on him, since he has a sexual.
And if he comes in, what do you do? You have to call the law, and the law's thirty minutes away and.
Unfortunately, but you feel bad if we, see, we had a problem with the mental pool. Nobody did anything about it, and then guess what? A girl gets grilled by him.
Yeah.
Because we didn't do anything about it. So the problem is, is if there's a problem, we don't wanna wait forever to do something about it till something bad happens.
But then again, does it fall on the library's responsibility that?
Well, technically, the library's the city off, or city building. During our building, so she would have to have permission from the city to get a no trespass on it. I guess the city meeting's in a week, so we can just have it on the agenda.
See if you wanna call a city meeting, a meeting to discuss it, you know.
Now, now you've seen it, and there's actually three of them in town.
Three of them, three, six.
Yes, sir.
Well, why don't we leave it, the, the city meeting's in a week, and we, right out of week.
I think she was.
No, it's two, it's two weeks.
Trying to do a return after we're out of there.
We can probably get by.
I guess what you need to do as mayor, is tell the library, before it becomes a disaster. And that's what you can do.
The last time we asked him to leave a city meeting, he started threatening to make people up.
Just call me and I'll come take care of Manny. I don't know why he's scared of me.
Good to know.
And he, I think what he's doing is he's going down here because it's a year before he did that. But he knows.
That don't mean you act like that.
But he knows that he's not scared of the ground, it's not awesome.
Even if he does nothing, just his presence scares people.
I had an incident.
There's a library.
But he has had episodes.
He has put in periods, I don't know what actually happened, if he threatened anyone or did anything disquieting, uncomfortable, and he shows up and everyone is.
Well, we had an incident with the two girls that live with Danny, Jake's girl. They're twenty-one and twenty-two, and I went to Manny's house, and said, you realize, you scared the twenty-one-year-old. I said, don't let it happen again, cause they kept following him. And, you know, they kept walking faster, and they dawdled off, and he'd follow them.
I was passing right here the other day, and I was going by him, and in the weight truck, and he yelled, suck my cock.
No. I'll be honest with you, and I mean, I'll be as honest as I can be. Manny's a good guy, but you don't know, it's a flip of the coin, if he's on that meth. He set himself on fire at Cheryl's house, put his shirt, took his shirt off and started a fire, we had a public gas. Cause he was on the meth, you never know which way he's.
I don't know where he's allowed to be, where he's not allowed to be.
He's not allowed to be around children.
It is, it's a public, it's a lot of.
Also, with the pool.
Pool is an entity owned by the city, and being an entity, a pool, you can refuse service to anyone. The question is though, is.
That should work for the library too, though.
I don't know, I mean, that's why I'm saying, if we wait till the city meeting, maybe we, I can find somebody to go out with the sheriff officer.
Oh, I want more information, I want to know where he's allowed to be, where he's not allowed to be, just to say away from children.
We may, we may bill have a sheriff officer at the next meeting.
Yes, I had talked to him, and I gave him your phone number, um, and he kinda got a little upset with Linda, and that's why he'd come, but he would like to come back.
I mean, thank you, welcome.
Uh-huh, but he will come back, and he'll be the one you need to ask.
Well, I would think if he's a pedophile, he wouldn't be allowed anywhere where children are.
Doesn't matter if he's a pedophile or not, if he's, if the kids are scared, that's a safe place for them.
Okay, so that would be disturbance. A lot of people are scared of clowns, it's not illegal to be a clown going into Walmart. But, you're talking about somebody acting irrationally, and that would be disturbing the peace. If he's acting irate and actually just disturbing the peace, it's a hundred percent he can't be there, we can't trespass him, even though it's a public problem. If he is not disturbing the peace.
But it's Manny, he's probably.
Well.
Getting loud and saying it. Hey, where's those earbuds in his ear, he can't even tell.
I know.
I guess my argument is, he's a grown man, he don't need to lock it dead. I mean, what you say.
I'm telling you right now, if you weren't taking off running, I was coming out of the truck, I was gonna kill someone.
Oh, I thought it could beat the hell out of him.
That fucker ever gets around my daughter.
Yeah.
It's on. It ain't gonna happen.
I think the girls don't go to the library until we get situated, they're already still scared of it.
Well, and why would you not be, I mean, he is a convicted sex offender, he is.
Multiple.
Yes. Convicted of rape, and so, I mean.
You don't want your daughter down there and him there.
Oh, I guarantee he's better.
You know what I'm saying? So you gotta think about all of the other.
I know, and she goes to the reading programs, so.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I mean.
And it's like I told Ken, it's a flip of the coin, you don't know one day he's good, normal, next thing he's so sprung out.
And you don't know if it's cause he is on meth, or because he hasn't had meth for too long.
Oh, get this, when we called the cops and Lakota was there, and talked to the cops, Manny says, "Well, I was just walking around town looking for my pot I dropped." He told the cops that, they don't even wanna fuck with it.
Well, I know, I know where he dropped it, cause I know who found it.
But you don't tell the cops, "Hey, I'm looking for my drugs," wait, it's Manny, never mind.
There are no pots, nothing, man.
Oh, Cheryl left, but Chris Gossis came over yesterday, she's on a rant, somebody's giving her kids meth, her daughter meth, her thirteen-year-old, and she's gonna kick ass and leave questions there. Hell, she just said she got out of jail for stealing that truck.
Yeah.
So Manny was rattling off names of people that were selling. I thought, Manny, you forgot your name.
I mean, he. He, and she are like, and she's mad about it?
I know. Let's go on the pedal black, eh? Yeah, but it's her daughter, so. Does that we have a problem with another person, and they banned him from there because he was scaring the kids? I believe so, a couple years ago.
I think so.
Yeah. He's gonna fuck with the wrong person like your daughter.
It's not expired.
You're gonna fuck with the wrong person, you're gonna put a bullet in his head, and throw your tip-to-tate parade.
Um, I don't need bullets.
You got pigs?
No, in my head.
That's fine, one's their age. Oh, did you hear? All those charges got dropped against him?
Yeah, so he's spoiled. Yeah, he snitched on some others, and they all were. So supposedly, he wasn't supposed to be able to get bonded out when he went to jail, until four day. I guess when he went in there, uh, they already had the.
About where he met?
No, uh, they already had the bondman sitting there to bond him out, and he already had a whole book wrote out for the cops of information to keep him out.
And I even talked to the officer and asked him, is there anything legal we knew to get him out of town, and he said, "No, he's got the right to live here."
Yep. As long as he owns a house and pays taxes, he's gonna.
Well, he don't own a house, but his mom does, but same thing.
He has a place that he has permission to live. Which I hear that house is horrible.
Somebody went inside once and walked right back out, it stunk so bad. No cabinets, no nothing.
I'm pretty sure he probably beat him up. They probably didn't listen. Yeah, at one point in time, he wasn't that bad of a person, but now you don't know if it's because he's too high or not high enough.
Yeah, he's a flip of a coin.
He don't, if he can't find none, then he's gotta go too long without it.
Yeah.
It's as bad as.
Cheryl's running him off, he got caught over at Cheryl's house a couple weeks ago, in the middle of the night, and Leah went out there with a damn knife, was gonna cut him. She didn't know who the hell it was. No, she's gone again.
Oh.
She don't know what she's gonna do. I don't know either. He's not, I know he's not allowed, if we have the Easter egg hunt over there or anything with kids, he's not allowed there, and Cheryl will make sure he knows. Because that's for the kids.
I don't think he's legal to be going there.
I don't think so either.
No, I'm gonna look it up when I get home, I have nothing better to do tonight, I don't think, do some research. Pretty good about looking up laws and all that good stuff.
And I think, believe it or you, you guys can ban it.
Well, yeah, if he's causing a disturbance, he can be trespassed.
And with his past history, I think that's another ban.
There's only two things that you cannot be trespassed from, technically speaking, to my understanding, that's, A, the city office, because then you can't pay your bill, they cannot.
You can be trespassed from a city.
It would have to be a very extreme.
If he, if he went in there and screamed and stuff, because there's a drop box, he has a legal right to go to that drop box, but not in the building.
And I believe the other thing is open meetings unless you're causing a disturbance.
Manny always causes disturbance, though.
I'm not. The open meeting one.
And that's a finite one.
Really hard.
Yeah, because it's an open meeting.
I mean, if I see Manny, I can tell him, "Hey, you need to go to the library, dude," and see if that works.
Well, there's another thing with some people like that, and he's one of them, is when you do something about it, it's gonna make him mad. You call the cops, he's gonna take it out on the librarian and stuff, and he will, cause he's not thinking straightly.
Yeah, but that's when retaliative comes into play, and retaliating against something is.
I don't know, we'll figure it out, well.
I don't know, it's a shit show.
But, I mean, yeah, they can't even find him when they come into town with.
Oh, they know where the fuck he's at, he's either usually hiding at his mom's or hiding in his house.
Well, that is all a hundred percent true, but they can't go get him.
Fact is, let's face it, Reno County doesn't wanna deal with him, and I don't fucking blame him.
Last night, after we seen the cops go fly, Manny was riding his bike this way.
Well, the other night, when I was down talking to Tony, I mean, they were looking, four women down to get ice in the cafe, and, uh, the cops come in, the town's from the west. We were wondering, what the fuck? They came from the west, or mainly from? He came from the west, I think he came to Main Street, and they made a loop.
Then he hung with five, on Bird. Had to try and, and the girl jumped off, and hit her head, and they didn't find her until they were parked down there.
Yeah, no matter how you look at it, it's a shit show, and cops don't wanna deal with them, we don't wanna deal with them, no one wants to deal with them.
The cops don't care to deal with them, and in two hours, the judge is just letting them out.
Yeah.
They say, what the fuck is the point of this?
They ain't even got the paperwork fucking done, and he's out. How? I don't know.